It is officially nine o'clock. I'm going to ask that we stand for an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. And Pastor Hall is here this morning to give the invocation.
Good morning. Would you please be with me in this moment? Let us express our gratitude for all who serve. May they use their gifts and graces for the common good, upholding the dignity of everyone they meet. Let us express our gratitude for the opportunity to lead communities in their work, to make this portion of creation a place of peace. May you, as Board of Commissioners, embrace the challenges and responsibilities of being leaders with grace, humility, and gratitude. May you lead with integrity, honoring those traditions which bind communities together and abolish those which separate us. Grant us all wisdom to know where to stand firm and when to gather those needed to make change. Grant us all courage to say no when no is for the common good and yes when yes is needed for transformation. May we all welcome our Board of Commissioners and those people gathered with us here today, both in person and online, as we receive back the fellowship that is extended. May your day begin in peace and end with the wisdom of knowing that you have graced others with the same. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the minutes of March 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Four oh. Next up is Commissioners' reports and comments. And Commissioner Wagner, you want to go first?
Sure. Good morning. I don't have a whole lot this morning. I just wanted to say a little quick story to thank a bunch of people. I was coming through Williamsport the other day and saw a couple of people in the street pointing up and there was smoke coming out of the top of a house. I stopped out of the way of everybody. And at that point, fire department wasn't there and there was a gentleman on the roof with the smoke. It was a big two-story house, too. It was a high, real high house. And I just wanted to thank all the firefighters. Williamsport, I think halfway was there, maybe even Funkstown. There were sure four units there. And they come up on the scene and they literally, it was quite a bad predicament for this gentleman on the roof. They, I got to watch it. You know, you see drills, but you get to watch it start to finish. And the precision of the firefighters, which, you know, volunteers, and I assume there's some staff there, too. The volunteers, how they took charge of the scene and ended up, you know, in a pretty precarious episode, ended up did get the guy off the roof, saved a life. So you got to see that live. And that was pretty exciting for me to see how it really works live and how efficient these fire departments are. So I want to thank all them for the diligent training and how they handle our community. So that's it for me.
Thank you. No comments.
Nothing this morning?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Klein?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. I do want to mention that Commissioner Barr and I attended the Commission on Aging Dinner fundraiser down at St. James. Well-attended, good remarks made by the MC and staff about the Commissioners, how we've been working with them. And it was nice to be there and see the fruit and hear of their challenges. Also, I've been down to Training Center a couple of times this week. We've been conducting hose training and ladder testing. And my one comment to follow up with Commissioner Wagner is our first responders always training there when you need them. And I also attended the Vietnam Veterans Ceremony on March 29th. Jim Klein and his team, Jim Klein with a K, has put together a monument that is a true tribute to the Vietnam veterans. My closing comment would be to the Vietnam veterans, welcome him. And that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good morning, everyone. I attended, as Commissioner Klein mentioned, the fundraiser and annual banquet for Senior Center down at St. James School. That was Saturday night. On Friday night, there was a major fundraiser, the annual tribute at HCC. And this year, in lieu of an individual, it was to all the athletes, physical trainers, coaches, and all the staff at HCC. So it was a very, very nice affair, well-attended, and a tremendous fundraiser. Currently, to date, I think the Athletic Scholarship Fund is somewhere just shy of 2.3 million. So all for good cause for endowment and scholarships to students attending the college. Also, yesterday, I made my weekly trip to Annapolis over the course of the last 90 days. I attended, the Comptroller and the Treasurer had a signee die breakfast gathering first thing yesterday morning, and then left that and attended a similar venue at Maryland Association of Counties. So I did spend a good bit of my day in Annapolis yesterday. And as always, we're quite busy. And congratulations to our local Western Maryland delegation. The past 90 days have been very taxing, if you will. I know there's a lot going on in Annapolis, some good, some we're not happy about. But nevertheless, signee die was apparently late last night, and we're assuming all our local delegation gets home today. We pray for their recovery and rest, actually, because I think particularly the last few weeks, it's been very taxing in Annapolis. Whether you like the outcomes or not, it was just very, very, very overwhelming, to say the least. Anything we've missed, gentlemen? I do have two items for upcoming events. Grand opening for Eliza's House, 25 East Franklin, that's this Friday, April the 11th. And then there is a cleanup at River Bottom Park this Saturday down at Williamsport, April the 12th at 9:00 a.m. So there at River Bottom Park. With that, we'll move right into staff comments and County Administrator Michelle Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind residents that we did lift the burn ban last week and I'd like to thank the public for their patience as we were working diligently to ensure the safety of life property as well as our first responders. Just want to remind residents that they need to check local weather conditions before burning. Never leave a fire unattended. Keep a water source or fire extinguisher nearby. Avoid burning on windy days and ensure fires are fully extinguished before leaving the area. I have one change to the agenda. Item number one, APFO mitigation, needs to be rescheduled for April the 15th so that staff can work through some of that with the developer. Our Williamsport evening meeting that was originally scheduled for next week has been canceled. And I have several letters of support that I need to receive a consensus for. The first is for HMP Training Incorporated. They have a grant application for the Fiscal Year 25 Performance Incentive Grant Fund to provide vocational training to students in Washington County. They're not asking for any funding from the county. Need a consensus.
Consensus? Are you okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
The next is Washington County Historical Society, Miller House, 200th Curatorial Facility Initiative. They are seeking grant funding for design work associated with the renovations to the building of the rear of the Miller House Museum in downtown Hagerstown. They're not asking for any funding from the county at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Last is Maryland Broadband Expansion Access and redeployment, I'm sorry, deployment grant application for Comcast. They are looking for grant funding for expansion of broadband infrastructure in Washington County to underserved areas. They're not asking for county funding.
Motion.
Okay.
Consensus? Do you just need consensus?
Consensus.
Are we doing the same thing for the other cable providers?
If they ask us to, we would, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
You good with that? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then we move along to tab number two, intent to convey real property. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Andrew Ashland, Director of Public Works. Todd Moser, Rural Property Administrator, Division of Engineering. Moved to adopt the ordinance conveying real property located at 116 West Baltimore Street, also known as the Wire Center, and authorize the execution of necessary documentation to finalize the conveyance. The Board of County Commissioners previously declared the property a surplus property on September 10th, 2024, and instructed staff to list the property on the open market. Property has been listed on the open market since September 2024 with a listing producing 15 leads, seven walkthroughs, and three offers. County entered into an agreement of sale with the highest offer from Venture Point 10 LLC for $375,000 on March 13th, 2025. Staff is ready to proceed with the conveyance of the property at this time.
I have a question. The 375,000, if this deal is ratified and goes through, where does the money go to? I guess that would be...
It would likely go into our CIP reserves to be reallocated to other projects throughout the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
How long did we have the property on the market?
It'd be about eight months at this point.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to adopt the ordinance conveying the real property at 116 West Baltimore Street.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the floor. I just want to go on record that I'm abstaining from this for a number of different reasons. So with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Okay, three and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is tab number three, Berman-Mouth easement agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Maloges, Rural Preservation Administrator, Department of Planning and Zoning. This morning, I bring you the Berman-Mouth easement agreement project. It's FY24. We have applied for a preservation funding from the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. Due to the abundance of funding, both state and county funds, Mouth was able to provide 11 offers to applicants. Berman property was one of those offers made, and actually, they were quite high on the ranking list. But due to acreage consistencies, what I had on record and then what Mouth found in their title search, the Berman's easement fell about $24,990 short. I do have an update on that number. Mouth reached out to me yesterday and said they're actually not 24,990, it's actually 18,292. So it's about 6,000 less than what I thought I was going to be requesting today. So Mouth bases easement values on land-only fair market value appraisals on each applicant property. Results in a per-acre easement value, and then they extrapolate that per-acre value across the entirety of the property. For forest easements or any other type of conservation easement, Mouth does not pay for that acreage that's already in there on the property. So property has a forest easement that's 10 acres, they deduct 10 acres from that, you know, easement value, same if there's a federal scenic easement or something like that. Our original, the records I had originally was 6.46 acres in size, but title work showed that the forest easement on this property was actually only 1.7 acres in size. Since they used the application acreage for their calculation out of the gates, the real value fell short, which what we thought was 24,990, which actually ended up being 18,292 short of a full easement offer. It's the intention of County Land Preservation that we adequately compensate landowners for surrendering their development rights. So the intent of this recommendation is to, you know, fully compensate the landowner for what they're giving up by going into the easement program. In FY24, the Commissioners approved $1.5 million from the County General Fund to put toward land preservation efforts. That 1.5 million was deposited into the Land Preservation General Operating Account, which is what we would, which I like to use for this funding. County's Attorney Office has reviewed the approved easement agreement. Ag Advisory Board approves the use of land preservation fund, of county funds for land preservation procurement. So the recommended motion is to approve the easement agreement and to commit the 18,292 to the Berman easement project for Mouth.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, I just want to make sure that that amount he referenced is different than what's on the original motion to...
292.
Correct. And the original motion included 24,990, so make sure you're including the correct amount in the minutes. 18,292. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item, tab number four, 2025 Housing Bond Allocation Transfer. Good morning, Jill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated, I'm here today for the 2025 Housing Bond Allocation Transfer. As stated in your agenda report form, each year, the state issues bonds across the state to handle affordable housing throughout the state for low-income families. So that includes loans as well as rental assistance across the state. This year, our allocation is $7,173,121. We are recommending that we transfer those funds back to the state for the administration and implementation, due to the fact that it is a fairly complex and costly process for us to issue our own bonds and create a loan program within Washington County. The state already has those programs set up and have the staff capable of handling that. So our recommendation would be to transfer the entire amount of $7,173,121 back to the Department of Housing and Community Development so that they may issue these bonds on behalf of Washington County.
I know we discussed this before.
Yes, sir.
What is your track record of being able to determine how much of that money actually came back to us last year? All of it? Is it, what's the, how do we get visibility on? We transfer it back to the state, it's supposed to come back to the county. How do we get visibility on where that money was spent in the county?
So I guess I forgot to include that within the packet. They do each year as part of the request for the transfer, give us the numbers. I believe last year, we actually got more than our allocation, because when you put the money back into the pot, obviously, it gets spread around across the state. We actually got more money back, a little bit more than we actually put into it.
Could you send to the Commissioners...
Absolutely.
Where that money actually went last year?
As far as specific loans or just the funds in general?
Well, is there a way to get some clarity as to the type of housing it went to and who, if it was just individual homes or did it go to any organizations? And how many homes did it actually support?
The money, I can tell you, goes directly to the homeowners and the renters. The way they do that is through the Maryland Mortgage Program.
But is there a way to get an idea that we supported 400 homes, for example?
Yeah, I can call the state and get those numbers.
I think that might be helpful to us.
The only question I had was the other option, was if we kept it, which is, which is the reason we don't want to, it takes more personnel to manage it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's the only other option? So you might have answered this, I don't know, I might have missed it, but there's a lot of interest on that money. They pay interest on that $7 million or...
To the homeowners?
No, to the state. If we had it in our account, wouldn't we get interest on it? Or wouldn't we?
I would assume they do, because it is a bond. It is issued as a bond, but...
Most CDPG programs like this, any interest received must be used as part of the program as well. So the state wouldn't keep it per se, it would be reinvested in the program.
Okay, got you. So it would get rolled back in?
Correct.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we don't want to endure the expenses of implementing this program, but we can take advantage of still getting the money the state has at the pot of money.
Yes, sir.
We're not being hurt or diminished by any people being denied.
Correct. In fact, the only county in the state of Maryland that actually keeps their allocation is Montgomery County. All the other counties transferred it.
Montgomery County is large enough, they have their own skilled staff...
They have their own staff and, yes, sir.
Can handle...
I'll motion to approve the transfer.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four oh. Thank you, Jill. Next item, under tab five, United States Department of Agriculture Community Facilities Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Kramer, Director of the Office of Grant Management. And I'm here today to recommend a motion to accept a congressionally-directed community facilities grant from the United States Department of Agriculture in the amount of $1 million. The Washington County Office of Grant Management, on behalf of the Emergency Services Department, is seeking approval to accept the grant funds to be used for the Tactical Village at the Public Safety Training Center. The grant is through the federal government and part of the congressionally-directed spending funds from USDA, and is specifically for improving the facilities, and they were earmarked for the Tactical Village.
Recommend to approve. I'm sorry?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Derek.
Ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four oh. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you kindly. Have a great day.
Next item, tab number six, Jail-Based Medication-Assisted Treatment Program. Approval to submit application and accept funding as awarded.
Good morning. Karsten Arons, Office of Grant Management.
Director of the Reporting Center.
We would ask you to move to approve the submission of the application and accept funding as awarded for jail-based medication-assisted treatment program.
Just one quick question. This is for nearly 400,000?
Yes, sir.
This grant. Do you have an idea how much we spend altogether on medical assistance of this type at the jail?
That, it's all grant-funded.
Right.
The medications and the portion of medical, the medical department, we don't have any funds in the regular budget for that. It's all grant-funded.
I was just curious if it's over a million dollars or something like that, but I motion to approve.
Second. Second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab number seven, Governor's Office for Children, FY26 Community Partnership Agreement Proposal.
Good morning. Richard Lush, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. Today, I'm here for, to request a motion to approve the submission of the Fiscal Year 26 Community Partnership Agreement Proposal to the Governor's Office for Children in the amount of $756,266, and they accept the funding as awarded. The Washington County Office of Grant Management, on behalf and at the direction of the local management board, requests the approvals to submit the Community Partnership Agreement Proposal to the Governor's Office for Children for Fiscal Year 2026. In response to their notice of funding availability, the proposal requests funding for various programs impacting the well-being of children, youth, and families in Washington County, as well as support for county administrative expenses. Funding requested by the local management board will be used according to the notice of funding availability, using the Enough Theory of Action, which calls for cross-sector diverse partnerships with local organizations to engage in collaborative action with community residents to drive decisions for place-based investments and strategies that increase economic mobility and end child poverty in Maryland. The community, the children's community inter-agency fund resources and local management board coordination should help address the root causes of poverty at the community level by focusing on systems and structures in the four Enough Result areas: cradle-to-career education, healthy families, economically secure families, and safe and thriving communities.
Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Four oh. Next item's tab eight, Business and Economic Development Incentive Program.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Linda Spence, Financial Programs Administrator for the Department of Business and Economic Development.
Jonathan Horowitz, the Director of the Department of Business and Economic Development.
We're here today to request a motion to support the elimination of two underutilized financial programs. The first is the Pad Ready Stimulus Program, which provides a three-year tax credit against the county real property tax on four tenths of 1% of construction cost for new improvements on an improved parcel. The second is the New Jobs Tax Credit Program. That offers a six-year tax credit for businesses that expand or relocate to Washington County. Both programs have become redundant due to overlapping with other initiatives, which has reduced their effectiveness in achieving the county's current economic development goals. If approved, I propose or we propose that both programs expire on June 30th, 2025. Projects currently rolled in either program will continue to receive support through their respective closure dates.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second, and I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to sort of clarity, we're not eliminating economic development incentives, we're terminating two that have been underutilized, redundant, not effective, but there's other programs out there that replace them. So we're not eliminating incentives for business, but we just have better opportunities.
That is correct.
Okay.
Streamlining and improving the whole process and the availability.
All right, very good. Good morning.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four oh. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Next item's tab number nine, Soul Source Award Purchases 1734 Neptune Meters and AMR Systems. Good morning, Brandy.
Good morning. Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The first recommendation after this morning is the Soul Source Award, PUR 1734 Neptune Meters and AMR System. Moved to authorize the Soul Source procurement for the purchase of 216 Neptune water meters from Corin Maine out of Martinsburg, West Virginia, for a total sum of $99,686.20. That's based on the quote provided by Corin Maine from March 14th, 2025. These meters will be used to replace existing outdated meters currently in county-owned systems. The locations include Elk Ridge, Sandy Hook, and Mount Etna. Water meters must be replaced in a 10- to 15-year maintainable, reliable schedule in order to have accurate billing for water use. All meters... All meters mentioned in this report have met their life expectancy. The Department of Water Quality wishes to apply sections one through 106.2A and two of the Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County to this procurement. This section states that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when the compatibility of equipment, accessories, or replacement parts is paramount to this consideration. And this approval does require all commissioners.
Approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, four oh, thank you. Next item, tab number 10, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0182, 122025 Chevrolet Tahoe vehicles for Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The next recommendation is the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, INTG-25-0182, 122025 Chevy Tahos for the Sheriff's Department. Move to authorize by resolution for the Sheriff's Office to purchase 122025 Chevy Tahos from Heritage Fleet out of Milford, Delaware, for a total sum of $653,740. We're also looking for approval to utilize another jurisdiction's contract that was awarded by the State of Maryland's Department of General Services. The Sheriff's Department requests the purchase of these 12 vehicles to replace vehicles that have exceeded the county's vehicle and equipment types and usage guidelines. The county's replacement guidelines does say that vehicles less than 19,500 pounds are recommended to be replaced after a 10 year lifecycle. The Code of Public Local Law of Washington County does provide that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through another entity's contract as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract, and we are doing so by utilizing this contract. There is cost savings by using this contract because of the economy's scale, it has leverage, and there is funding available for the purchase of these vehicles in the Sheriff's Department's capital project budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, four oh, thank you. Next item is under tab 11, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0183, Public Safety Solutions Rave Alert Pro, Department of Emergency Management.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
The next recommendation after we do is the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, INTG 25-0183, Public Safety Solutions Rave Alert Pro for the Department of Emergency Management. Move to authorize by resolution for the Department of Emergency Management to purchase the Rave Alert Pro from Rave Mobility, Safety and Safety out of Framingham, Massachusetts. Their proposal was for a total amount of $113,500. We're also asking for permission to use another jurisdiction's contract that was awarded by Omnia Partners. You'll see the breakdown of pricing in the body of the report. It shows that for the first year, there is a total of $39,500. This includes a one time fee of $2,500. Years two and three are for $37,000, bringing that total $113,500. This program will replace the current software at a reduced cost and provide more features. Rave will allow the emergency management to better plan, communicate, and respond to emergencies. These solutions improve efficiency and encourage cross agency collaboration before, during, and after emergencies. These solutions improve the efficiency, sorry, with Rave Emergency Management Solution is an easy to use mass notification for community engagement. Rave program will integrate with the Maryland State Emergency Alert Network, allowing local emergency management to alert community quicker throughout the emergency. The Code of Public Local Law of Washington County provides that we may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another government entity as long as we abide by the same terms, conditions, and pricing of that contract, and we have done so. There is funding available in the department's operating budget for this purchase.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion is second for approval, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, four oh, thank you. Next item, tab number 12, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0184, Emergency Communications Center Assessment, Department of Emergency Management.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The next recommendation is an Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, INTG 25-0184, Emergency Communications Center Assessment for the Department of Emergency Management. Move to authorize by resolution for the Department of Emergency Management to purchase services of comprehensive assessment from mission critical partners out of Port Matilda, Pennsylvania, for the proposed total of $120,765. We're also going to be utilizing another jurisdiction's contract that was awarded by the Houston Galveston Area Council. The Department of Emergency Management requests the purchase of these services to provide a comprehensive assessment of the Emergency Communications Center and the current computer aided dispatch system. The current computer aided dispatch system, the CAD system, is a legacy software system that has been in place since the 1980s when the county was first introduced to the CAD product. The computer aided dispatch system is used to dispatch all law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical calls throughout Washington County. Throughout the years, the department, as well as the county IT department, the vendor, have worked to maintain the CAD system, but recently they've noticed an uptick of slowdowns and performance issues, and they're requiring a lot more work for this. So they're requesting for this company to come in and determine where the areas need to be improved. The Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County, Maryland, provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another government entity as long as we abide by the same terms, conditions, and pricing, and we have done so. There is funding available in the department's capital improvement plan for this purchase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, four oh, thank you. Moving on to tab 13, bid award 1727, 72 stainless steel Ballard covers at the Hagerstown Regional Airport.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The next recommendation is a bid award, P U R 1727, 72 stainless steel Ballard covers. Move to awards to procure for 72 stainless steel Ballard covers at the Hagerstown Regional Airport to Humana Chemicals out of Port, Port McMarilyn, for a total of $61,995.80. A little background, security related assessments from the Transportation Security Administration, as well as the Sheriff's Department, did recommend that the Bullards be placed at the terminal curb. The contractor shall furnish 72 Ballard covers and county staff will install them. This is simply just for the Ballard covers, and there is funding available in the department's capital improvement account for this purchase.
Just one quick question, you might not be able to answer, but we're contractors, we're going to install them, I wonder why the contractor just doesn't install them if he's?
Because there's a lot of work going on out there, so they may not be ready for it at the time.
You're running a bit ahead. Andrew Echlin, Director of Public Works. So the setup is the county is doing the installation of the steel actual Ballard. What you're approving here is just the sleeve. So that'll go on as well, it's just purchasing it and then it has some tightening to it.
So it's not the whole.
Yeah, we're doing that, and then this is just for the cover, the stainless steel cover.
And for the record, I was out there Friday afternoon when Allegiant came in and I played inspector, nice job. I could tell we're doing it in house and very professionally.
Credit to the highway staff, and then again, to mention, this is also being covered by a Maryland Aviation Grant, 75%.
It's in a very sensitive area, as people embark and disembark from the airlines, they have to walk through that work zone area, so hats off to our highway crew. I was very impressed with the, they had the area well secured, roped off, the equipment. It's impressive, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Clarification, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, four oh. Moving on to tab 14, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0185, Security Updates at the Andrew F Wilkinson Courthouse, Washington County Circuit Court.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Kristen Gerstnackel, Court Administrator, Andrew F Wilkinson Courthouse.
This is my last recommendation today, it's for the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, INTG 25-0185, Security Updates for the Andrew F Wilkinson Courthouse, Washington County Circuit Court. Move to authorize by resolution for the Washington County Circuit Court to purchase and have installed various hardware and software components to allow for multiple security upgrades at the circuit courthouse from Skyline Technologies out of Glen Burnie, Maryland, for a total of $63,993.77. We're also going to be utilizing another jurisdiction's contract, which was awarded by the Washington County Public Network. Grant funds awarded by the Administrative Office of the Courts will be used to install additional access control panels, alarm panels, and an AI visual interhome system. The Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County does provide that the Board of County Commissioners may enter into an agreement that was awarded by another entity as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract, and we are doing so. We will also benefit with the direct cost savings because of the economy's scale, this contract is leveraged, and this is a grant funded project.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, four oh, thank you. Next item is tab 15, FY 2026, General Fund Budget Proposed Draft Number Three.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer.
Kim Edmond, Director of Budget and Finance.
And this morning, we are bringing forward draft three of the FY 26 Proposed General Fund Budget. The only change from draft two was for the Board of Elections Budget Line Item, an increase of $276,710 in both personnel and operations for a fourth voting site. To balance from this increase, we reduce the amount going to the capital reserve by $117,480 and the amount of General Ops Department, $159,230. Draft three of the general fund budget is still balanced at $326.8 million.
My question would be with, I'd like to say shenanigans, but the passing of the budget in Annapolis, how will draft four look based on some obligations and mandates and things we'd have to consider for this budget and the following budget cycle?
So we have been looking at in anticipation of the BRFA, still looking for the final text.
Now, BRFA is an acronym for?
The Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act.
For people listening, no.
So we're going to find the final draft of the bill, and we are going to assess and bring back on April 29th a new budget balance based off of those changes.
Okay, very good. I just didn't want folks to think we're not taking that in consideration.
Yeah, we already have our list of ideas and we're looking at it.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is under tab 16, I guess we're ready to move forward, we're running ahead of schedule here. FY 26 Golf Course Budget.
Good morning, Commissioners, Andrew Echlin, Director of Public Works.
Ryan Crabtree, Blackrock Golf Course Manager.
So for FY 26, the golf course has a $1.7 million annual budget, which is an increase over the previous year by about $261,000. And that's for several reasons. One effort that the staff has been initiating already is a bunker rehabilitation project. And so in order to fund that, what you'll see in the budget is the golf operating budget is actually doing an appropriation of $100,000 over to the capital budget to help pay for that. So that causes a little bit of regularities with what you're seeing percentage wise as far as the operating budget. Other areas that are cause for the increase is just the general county proposed budget for increase in step, COLA, and the salary scale realignment. And I suppose we'll wait to see obviously what happens with the county's general fund budget in light of the budget that was passed at the state level. And some other increases with respect to just utilities, contract services, those sort of things. I'll give a little bit of an overview on the revenue side, then I want to have some time for Ryan to share about some things going on at the golf course and the expense side. So obviously, we're a golf course, we are set up as an enterprise fund. We do have some support from the general fund as well to balance the budget. So golfing fees are obviously one of the main revenue areas. And so what we've done, even though this budget is on a fiscal year, the golfing season is really on a calendar year. And so what we've kind of planned for is not a lot of substantial changes for the season we're currently in, those things have already taken place. We're looking at around a $5 increase for 2026. Now again, that hasn't approved, but that's what's built into the budget. And so other areas that we have for revenue are pro shop sales. And this is the first full year for the restaurant, the 19th hole, which we're, you know, very pleased to have that partnership and support that business. So again, prior to that and during the COVID years, we were just kind of doing snack sales and limited things, and now we're, you know, supporting that business and they're paying us rent in return. So in terms of summary, where the golf course has been, we have been able to decrease the general fund contribution, it was around 400,000 in FY 24, and that was decreased to about 112,000 in FY 25, the current budget. And then what's proposed for FY 26 is 158,000. And so again, the golf course fund is trying to support some of these additional improvements and things, we have a lot going on out there. We're working with our golf board on some improvements to the driving range, we're calling the Learning Center. Those funds are actually from a private trust fund that was set up. So we're trying to do all that we can to put the best product out there and have it be accessible to the community. So that's kind of a snapshot of where we are, we'll say, we'll see how things progress in the future. We were able to keep the general fund contribution low for the past two years because we had been successful in building up that balance, and we'll just have to see where that trend continues in the future. I'll turn it over to Ryan to kind of talk about some highlights.
Before we go to Ryan, I just wanted to make sure that we're pointing out some things that contradict some statements that were made earlier today in Citizens Comments. The golf course fund generates fees to support its operations of about $1.5 million. It only receives $158,000 from the general fund, and that is generally to support capital projects to ensure that we have up to date facilities and that we don't have our golf course, you know, kind of going in, you know, in the wrong direction. So just want to make sure that we are clarifying that point for the general public.
And another statement worth clarifying, to my knowledge, we don't let people play for free. Yes, we do have marketing cards and things that we give out, and it's like cash prizes and things like that, but no one shows up and plays for free.
Yeah, and just to emphasize what a good job is being done there now, I've been tracking it for about six years. And six years ago, your revenue is mostly off rounds of golf, et cetera, correct? As you just said, your revenue, how many rounds about six years ago compared to how many rounds now average?
So about six years ago, it was around 18, 19,000, and in 2024 calendar year, we had 31,665 rounds.
So it's steadily climbing with rounds, and that's our revenue, obviously.
Correct, so a lot of the challenge we have now is trying to balance the different types of play because just with weather, you know, we max out at certain things. So I'd like to give Ryan credit for really looking at how to balance those two things because we want to have the general public there, but we also, you know, support a lot of nonprofit tournaments, high schools, things like that.
Can I ask a couple of questions just to clarify this? So the golf course is part of the parks and recreation overall activities that you manage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so in parks and recreation, we have a lot of programs for a lot of different consumers or citizens, be it kids, athletic programs, the swimming pools, like at Marty Snook Park. If you were to look at Marty Snook Park, okay, what does it cost to run Marty Snook Park, looking at all the inputs, okay, on an annualized basis? The swimming pool, I know, was sort of run separate, but aggregate, you know, it's got to be a large amount of money to provide that service to our citizens.
Correct, I mean, it's hard to just parcel off one park, it's easier to look at, say, the buildings, grounds, and facilities budget, the parks and recreation budget as a whole. and recreation budget as a whole, and just look at what our expenses are for those departments and what we bring in. I know when you just look at the parks and recreation budget, program fees and things like that cover about a third of the services that we provide. So, I remember I did look at kind of a rough calculation just in terms of the cost to maintain manicured park grounds, you know, per acre and what that would look like if you translate it to the golf course as some sort of benchmark. And so, using that as a benchmark, I think you're fairly, you know, reasonable. Again, we're putting a product out there that people are paying for, but it's also, again, a parks and recomenity, and we have that underneath our umbrella of services.
But we're providing parks for the general good of the citizenry. And there's an enterprise fund for the golf course, and I think you've said it's about $150,000 a year that the county supplements that creates it. But that's for the good of the community. There are also private golf courses, which people who have lots of money can pay the club fees and compete. But for access for a lot of our citizens, being introduced to golf, kids programs, training, people that are on fixed incomes, et cetera, they're the primary users of the county golf course is what I would surmise.
And golf courses owned by county, local, municipal governments is actually very common. It's not unusual.
And I'm sure, Ryan, I might get into it. You'll touch on this, is the services we provide to the schools and places like that.
Yep, I have that here.
Good. Thank you.
So, like I said, we had $31,665 total rounds in calendar year 24. In 2024, the total contribution to the area high school golfing programs is around $18,000 from Blackrock to WCPS, which is a great way to build the future customers hosting high school nine-hole matches, CMC Conference Championship, Maryland District Championship, and the Washington County High School Championship. We also have a junior golf clinic that is ran through the rec department. We usually have a fall and a spring clinic. The spring clinic in May is actually sponsored by GLG Jerdan, up to 16 kids. So, I want to thank GLG Jerdan for the sponsorship of the clinic here in May. We also host Blackrock Junior Golf Series June and July. We host Franklin County Junior Golf Tour and the Under Armour Junior Golf Tour. 2025 Tuesday Morning Senior League has 118 participants this year, which is the most since the league started in 2015. We have evening leagues, consist of Potomac Edison, McValvo, Elks, Antietam Brewery, and our Blackrock Ladies League. We also host the VGA, which is the Veterans Golf Association, twice a year, and then we have various outside group outings. Fall and Spring College Invitational for Catholic University in DC. In total, we have 39 tournaments, and 23 of those are nonprofits. And as Andrew said earlier, the addition of the nineteenth hole, April of '24, has been a great addition to the golf course. So, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
How many nonprofit tournaments?
Twenty-three.
And those nonprofits raise money throughout to help benefit folks in the county?
Correct.
So, that's another plus for the golf course.
And I just, we'll add one more comment with respect to that. Because we are a public course, obviously, our mission and purpose is sometimes larger than just dollars and cents. And so, what we've seen, whether it's been nonprofit tournaments or even our own high school youth programs, is Blackrock is where those things tend to congregate, for good or bad, again, to balance all that demand. But that's what we've seen on the youth side, as certain places have said, no, we can't accommodate this any longer, they end up coming to Blackrock. So, again, we're providing that service and benefit to the community, sometimes, you know, maybe perhaps at the expense of another dollar or two, but there's additional value, we feel, from that.
Well, that's the point, is it provides a service to our population. The swimming pool provides a service to the population. There are private swimming pools, like at Fountainhead or at the Waynesboro Golf Club or places like that, but those are not accessible to most of our citizens, and that's why we have a Marty Snook swimming pool. Isn't that correct?
Correct. And we could come in and pick that out because Marty Snook Ag Center, they have individual budgets where you can see, here's the amount of, you know, county support directly going to provide those services.
Now, I'm not a golfer, but I appreciate what it contributes to the community. I'm not sure I would have voted for it in the first place, but it is there. It's successful. It doesn't cost that much money out of our annual budget, and it contributes a great deal to, you know, the income of our nonprofits as well as providing access to kids that wouldn't normally be able to access golf and learn something about developing character and competition on the golf course. Well done. Great job.
Yep, very good. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is under tab seventeen, transit budget.
Andrew Echlin, Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Sean Harbaugh, Transit Director.
I'll provide an overview again of the transit budget and then turn it over to Sean for some details on the operation side and expenses. So, Washington County Transit provides service across several platforms. We operate the Fixed Route County Commuter Service, the ADA Paratransit, and also manage the Special Transportation Assistance Program, or STAB. Some people call it the Taxi Voucher Program, as well as the Job Opportunity Bus Shuttle, the Jobs Program. On the revenue side, kind of fitting in with the theme of state contributions and whatnot, we do receive a lot of operating support through federal grants, state grants. And so, the method that's used to calculate your eligibility traditionally has been adding what transit generates through fare box collections, fees, and advertising. The remaining amount to cover expenses is eligible for what our category of transit service is called federally transit agency locally operated transit systems. It's a LOTS. We just use the acronym LOTS, locally operated transit systems. That federal grant through FTA covers up to 50%. And then, the remaining amount, traditionally, Maryland Department of Transportation provided 25%, and the county provided 25% plus any additional amount to balance the budget. So, a little bit of good news, under the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, the federal funds that we could receive are increasing, however, the state funds are not. In FY 26, we are requesting the maximum state amount, which is $314,000. So, effectively, the state contribution, if you're going by that traditional model, would be $472,335 short of this traditional contribution. So, for FY 26, what you'll see is that Transit is able to use its fund balance reserve to reduce the county's general fund contribution by $286,000 compared to the previous year. So, that's good for the county of the current year. We are anticipating carrying over about $1 million in our CARES Act funds, COVID-era funds, into FY 26, which can serve as an additional reserve fund, but it can't be used as a funding match against other federal funds because you can't use federal funds to match federal funds. So, in summary, I'll say that from a financial situation, Washington County Transit is in a much better situation than some other transit agencies around the state, but in time, we will probably face a similar fiscal situation if the state contributions on the operating side continue to stagnate or decrease, which has been the trend over the past five years, and once we exhaust our CARES Act funds. So, just wanted to provide that overview about where we think we are now, where we're headed, and what to kind of expect in the future and help advocate for, again, at the state level. Sean, would you like to talk a little bit about some of the expenses and services?
Sure. So, the transit budget has increased from about $142,000 from last year, about 3.96%. And it's mainly due to proposed step and COLA salary scale decompression. And also with the request for a transportation safety coordinator position, which will help train our drivers, put in a better safety and accident plan for our department to kind of help alleviate some of those issues. And just some additional increases with safety supplies, CDL licenses, which we'll be going back to the departments. I think HR was previously covering that. With, we were currently in the process of wrapping up our transit development plan, our TDP. Hopefully, within the next week or two, we'll have the final plan to be able to bring forth to everyone to present. There's a lot of recommendations in there for services. I know that sometimes comes up a lot with like different, going to different areas that we might not serve currently, things of that nature. So, I know there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be addressed within that plan and some things that we can do in the short term to improve our services for the citizens of Washington County. Within the next month or so, we're going to be implementing a new dispatching software for our paratransit ADA program. It's called Ecolane. It's going to essentially kind of redefine the way we schedule our paratransit client pickups and getting them the doctor's appointments and such things of that nature. We're also going to be doing a, or implementing a new fixed route software as well called Passio, which will essentially allow passengers to use an app on their phone to kind of check the location of where our buses are at through routes and kind of give a little bit better, give them a little bit better information of when our buses are going to arrive at the stops for a little bit better customer service.
The only question I have is that you've mentioned a safety plan, a coordinator for safety. What was the name of that again? It was a?
It's a transportation, safety, and training coordinator position.
What did we do prior to that?
We've done a lot of the training kind of in-house with, we'll use kind of our senior level drivers that will use to train newcomers coming in the door. Kind of have a program for them to follow, to use to train the newcomers coming in. But this position would definitely kind of really buckle down with the ins and outs of what should be trained to the new hires and also be able to follow up like safety, whether it's being out there on the road, kind of monitoring other drivers and just making sure that they're following all the rules and regulations of the road.
The other piece of that and reason we felt it was worth submitting is because a number of years ago, maybe perhaps two, the requirements for CDL training changed to where you have to go through accredited program or trainer to do that. And so, that's where we've been partnering with HCC, which has been good in some respects. We have been able to offset the costs for some programs through grants. Transit, simply because of how the system was set up, I believe was not eligible for those grant programs, the same way that the highway department is. And then, also, that program has been more geared towards your long-haul trucker, your dump truck driver. And again, so what Sean's talking about, yes, we need to have a CDL driver to operate our fixed route bus, but then there's also all the other customer service training that we're kind of missing. So, we weren't having quite the same success on the training side, perhaps, as highway department.
Question I have, can we get an update? Wasn't there a quick claim deed on the alley or something we talked about some months ago?
Correct. So, I'll be coming back in a separate presentation with respect to that. So, some work was done through the city's end as far as the quick claim, and I'll be back in front of you with a consolidation plat to get your authorization. So, I think in the meantime, there's some administrative level plan review and things like that, but the final review will be presented to the board about what we're doing there.
So, it's in progress?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is under tab eighteen, FY 26 airport budget.
Andrew Echlin, Director of Public Works.
Neil Doran, Airport Director.
The airport is an enterprise fund, and this year does not have any general fund financial support for the operating budget, which totals $4,091,450. So, again, similar to the golf course, while we're here talking about the operating budget, I wanted to point out the link between the operating and the capital budget. In FY 26, there is a sizable $576,000 appropriation from the airport's operating budget to the capital budget, and this goes to support non-grant eligible projects and serve as a match to other projects. This year, we do have the passenger facility charge and parking revenues, which are now being collected, that help offset those costs that otherwise the airport would not be able to provide and would require more general fund support. In the current budget, the airport is drawing down its fund balance in FY 26 with a $432,270 transfer from the fund to the operating budget, which was built up from COVID-era funds. I would say we've had discussions, and our goal is to return to more balanced pay-as-we-go approach when the bipartisan infrastructure law projects wind down. So, what we've had on the capital budget side is this fear of activity because there's additional grant funds that are available for this window of time. Once that time ends, then the funds are no longer there. So, a lot of the projects we're trying to take advantage of, like terminal projects and other, five, what, $5 million plus million dollars of grant projects do require some matching funds. We're trying to work through all those, and then, once that period ends, kind of return to a more normal period. I think it's also worth recognizing that in our budget, there's a matching effect with several revenue and expense categories. For example, we've seen success in commercial service operations through Allegiant growing. And so, obviously, when that happens, we have to staff that. So, we're getting revenue through our new contract we have with them, and obviously, we have expenses with staff, but we also see snack bar concessions and other things increased through that. And I think Neil's going to touch more about this, but SNC has been a great partner, Sierra Nevada. They have a new contract that's requiring more services of our firefighters. And so, to staff those things, the, obviously, there's more expense, but we also have means in place now to help cover those costs. So, really, the airport, we want to be a partner. When our business partners grow, we also need to grow to provide those services, and so there's some additional costs with respect to that. Neil, you want to walk them through some of the things within the budget?
So, a lot of the positive revenue enhancements, as mentioned, was linked to increases in airline activity and associated fees, fees we charge the airline. Also, new arrangements with the AVIS Budget Group, doubling the number of available cars out at the airport, charging them various fees that increase the revenue of the airport fees from those arrangements. And as mentioned, our terminal parking fees, the collection of those, and increased snack bar sales, food and non-food items. The firefighter standby services in support of Sierra Nevada Corporation, SNC, really is going a long way towards making the fire department expenses self-supporting, but certainly, it's many, many staff hours to support, to supply six firefighters during the many hours during the week they're doing their anticipated flight testing program. Growth in expenses is just related to those expanded staff hours for airline and firefighter standby. Some increases related to employee salaries and benefits and just generally the increase we see from inflation-related costs. It is another positive that we're using less of the fund balance reserve. It's got that down to $187,970. The collection of the passenger facilities charge will really also help make the airport fund self-sustaining moving forward and provide us with a local match where we know that's going to come from, where we have these federally funded and state funded projects to improve the airport. We've also logically aligned our expenses and revenues in the airport into five basic lines of business. I'll give you an example. So, we have airport general operations, and we have terminal facilities and fuel farm, airport maintenance, airline services, and then the fire department. So, we're seeing the kind of revenues that each department earns and that is associated now with the expenses that are associated with those activities. No changes are really being proposed at all in terms of the fee schedule. So, increased revenue is linked to increased activity. The one change to the T-hanger rates is just a 3% increase, which is modest and less than it was last year, which is around 4%. So, as mentioned, all of the things, landing fees and other things are staying flat. No change to the terminal parking fee as well. Another positive is that we have an additional $50,000 to move on with a grant from Appalachian Regional Commission, where we can double our funds for advertising purposes. And on the personnel requests, we were seeking an additional full-time airline cross-utilized agent. agent that can work flights, because we'll be seeing flights five, six, seven days a week during peak periods. So, this trained person will allow a better work-life balance for our airline station leader, who otherwise would be working that many days a week. We're also requesting three additional firefighter positions that are part-time, and that's in support of keeping our costs low and providing Sierra Nevada firefighting standby services. I want to thank you all for your support, and express just how exciting the time of growth has been. I want to answer questions you may have.
Just the only one I have is more of a curious question. The aircraft that pays landing fees, is that increasing? Is it meaning more traffic, or is that staying about steady?
The airline landing fees are in our business permit, so it's staying the same as it was when that just...
Is there landing, I should know this, but I don't. Is there landing fees for any other commercials that come in and out of air cargo, or anything like that?
There are on commercial activities like air cargo. Those things would be collected by the Ryder Jet Center FBO, and then, our portion of what's collected would be remitted back.
I guess the main question is, are more commercial landing than there was two years ago, other than Allegiant?
We are projecting modest growth on the general aviation side as well, yes.
Okay.
Neil, appreciate that update and all the work that you guys are doing. It's great. I think the thing I would foot stomp here is, the airport operating fund is self-supported and does not require general fund subsidy. I think that's an important thing that everyone needs to understand. That's point one, really important, okay? The golf course needed, needs some subsidy, and eventually, it will probably be self-sufficient. I hope so. But here, there's no subsidy required. But the second point is, do you know what the economic impact is for Washington County? Because we actually have an airport here that conducts so much activity, not just Allegiant Airlines, but training, schooling, private aircraft support, fueling support, maintenance, developmental stuff for DOD, et cetera. What's the overall economic impact positive to our county?
That would be no less than $200 million annually on the local and state economy, and that would be number three among Maryland airports. And I use the word "no less" because the state study that was recently conducted did not count New Heights and Bowman and other immediately adjacent properties.
So, that then translates into additional tax revenue.
Right.
Not just from the airport, but from the people buying and consuming things, supporting the airport, okay? The people that live here, that pay taxes, own homes, pay sales taxes, gas taxes, and everything else. So, it's a major contributor.
Two hundred million.
$200 million. And it's not costing us in the operating budget a penny.
Correct.
Okay.
Very good.
That is fiscally responsible, and it's taken a while to get here, but you guys are doing a great job, and you have great plans for the future. So, thank you so much for what you're doing, and for what the economic team and others, and for previous commissioners who had a vision and invested in this. Thank you.
Very good compliment, Neil.
What end on that moment?
And for listeners interested in booking a flight with any of our affiliate partners there, it's called the Hakers Town Regional Airport.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Chip Rose. Employee Appreciation Day.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chip Rose, Director of Human Resources. I'm here to talk about Employee Appreciation Day. I would love to have a discussion with you, but ultimately, staff is seeking approval to purchase tickets for employees, and up to three other family members, for one of the home baseball games in June. If Washington County buys 250 tickets for the same game, the group sales price drops $8 a ticket, which is pretty efficient and affordable. The Box Cars have offered to provide us with an additional dedicated portal, so that our employees can go in and select their own seats at weekend events at no cost. We would like to offer this opportunity to every full-time employee, but we don't also want to buy so many tickets that we're going to have any of them go to waste. We're going to try to buy them in sort of tranches or rounds, if you will. Weekend games are the most popular, so we thought that we would aim for midweek games to increase the chances of ticket availability, and the fact that we would be the largest purchaser for that particular game. We propose to use funds from the Commissioners' contingency budget for the fiscal year, for this fiscal year, so that's why we're aiming for June. You can see there, under the fiscal impact, each employee, if each employee were to buy up to four tickets, then 250 tickets would cost roughly $2,000, 500 tickets would cost roughly $4,000, and so on. Just FYI, you have a schedule there, kind of in the packet that I shared with you. The Box Cars play at home from June the 10th, which is a Tuesday, June the 12th, which is a Thursday, and again, at home from June 24 to the 26th, which is Tuesday to Thursday again. First recommendation that I would make is to aim for 6:11, which is a Wednesday, right in the center of a week at 6:30 PM. That gives us some opportunity to kind of plan if there's bad weather or something like that, it gives us some opportunities for backup.
We did this last year.
We did this last year. It was very well received by the employees. Possibilities, if you wanted to discuss it or consider it, would be maybe two nights as opposed to one night. That's option one. And option two is, we could do more tickets on the same night, having a little bit more notice. I think we weren't able to schedule more than a couple of weeks in advance last year. This time, I think we get this out, the word out about a month in advance, which might be helpful, and more participation might be seen. And then, a third option would be to do a weekend event, which would be a little bit more kind of a foot race for the seats on a Saturday, for example. But the other nice thing about kind of a weekday is just more, less likely for rowdiness to ensue, for someone to tie one on, have a couple too many drinks, things of that nature, that might happen on a Saturday. Thursday is probably the day that I would not aim for, because you buy one, you get one free. So, that's why we chose Wednesday. It's the center of the week, it's right in the middle, pretty safe, I would say.
I motion to approve and make a comment, too, which is...
Second.
Be second. I don't think the Commissioners need to get involved in the details of the planning, let the county administrator and staff work on that, and, you know, you guys are fully capable of considering all the, all things need to be considered, and it's not our job.
I just...
I agree.
I would like to set a maximum amount from Commissioner contingency of $10,000, if that's acceptable.
I find that acceptable.
I agree.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, and the cap on the spending limit. Ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 4-0. Thank you, Chip.
I know that myself and all the other Commissioners appreciate what our workers, our employees are doing, day in and day out, year after year, and, you know, we thank them for everything they do, and this is a small thing that we can do to show that appreciation, although there are some people in the county that may not feel that way.
I think much of the feedback we got last year was very appreciated, and I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated, to discuss confidential personnel matters, and to consult with legal counsel.
Motion to go in closed session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 4-0, and you want to take a five-minute recess?
Yes.